Seven o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order and invite everyone to please rise and join us. A pleasant witness to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Steve Nelson.
Here.
Jane Shiro.
Here.
Jamie Davey.
Here.
Michael Vido.
Here.
Eric Jones.
Present.
Kristen Ren.
Here.
Horns.
Present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda as proposed? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as proposed? Move.
Sign.
Move and second it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move.
Second.
Move and second it. Roll call.
Ren.
Yes.
Shiro.
Yes.
Davey.
Yes.
Vido.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Dombek.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Audience to visitors, is there anyone in the audience this evening who would like to address the board on any particular issue?
Good evening, Board. My name is Mike Villalta, and I am a member along with Amanda Meyer, who could not be here this evening, as the Sycamore Creek representative on the HOA. And basically, what we're here tonight, or I'm here tonight, to talk to you about is that we had a meeting with Nathan Schwartz, the director of the high rate department at DeKalb County, and in reference to a stoplight at Plank and Lindgren Road. And this is by North Grove School. Now, please forgive me because I'm a newcomer to your community. And we asked him about a stoplight at that intersection. And so, basically, two things tonight. I'm here to invite you to a stakeholders meeting, and Mr. Schwartz will be contacting someone from the district to ask them to represent, and whoever else I guess would like to attend. And the second thing would be, as a member of the HOA, we're asking for your support for a traffic mitigation or stoplight that is long overdue at that intersection. The problem that I see, and again, as a newcomer to your community, and I'm not without some knowledge, I am a 32-year school teacher and administrator from my former school district in California, and retired in 2005, and also a five-term mayor of our city. And so, I've been dealing with traffic departments for a long time, and have been involved in the construction of schools, from the district level and also from the level of a city. And so, I come to you with some experience, and observing that intersection, it is an absolute disaster. At certain times of the day, traffic is backed up to North Grove School, and the buses, when they're at the intersection, it's hard to see or to turn left when you are next to a bus. And so, I would ask for your support, that you could, in the form of a resolution or some kind of support for a stoplight and traffic mitigation at that intersection. And there's no safe way that I see that students could cross the next subdivision, I believe, which is North Grove Crossing. So again, thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
Good evening, I'm Alex DeRidos. I've been to a lot of these, so I think if some of you might know me. I just want to preface my comments by saying, I don't mean to disrespect our staff in any way, they're wonderful. But in my honest opinion, at the high school, there's just an overall lack of accountability for misbehavior. I feel like it's necessary to inform you all, that it seems like students that typically break school policies are sent to a lunch or after-school detention, and they're allowed to use their cellphones, and to my knowledge, there's no remedial consequences we're using. And as of right now at our high school, two of the boys bathrooms are lacked because students tend to go in them and vape and just destroy them frankly. And this really comes down on our students with IEPs and 504s, as they're the easiest targets of bullying as well, that's another issue we've got going on. And I mean, I know last meeting, we talked about getting a dean, and I hope that really will help, I pray it does, but it seems that disciplinary issues are passed back and forth among administrators and teachers, and problems don't seem to get resolved very effectively. Again, I don't think that this is due to a lack of work on administration's part by any means, they're working their butts off over there. But in my opinion, a clear understanding of staff members' job requirements and consequences that disincentivize poor behavior are fundamental for our students getting the best school experience they deserve. A potential solution I think might help is more punitive punishment frankly, and implementing remedial and restorative consequences, such as students having mandatory service projects and social work to figure out what's causing these issues and why they're doing this, and figure out how to prevent students from repeatedly misbehaving and affecting other students in schools. And I would encourage you guys to reach out to our families and teachers, as they would back me up in saying that a lack of discipline is a significant issue at our high school. And thank you guys so much for your time and all you do.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Two, one, and two communications, correspondence, and informational items. Letters and newsletters, some nice letters, some invitation letters. FOIA requests, there was a FOIA request that's been responded to. Committee reports.
Spartan Center meets this Friday, so we'll be passing on Spartan Center t-shirts to the representatives of that group on the headway company.
Any other committee reports? Assistant superintendent for HR.
Thanks Jim. So we're excited to be at Opportunity House again, and I hear from Life School, so we have Rhonda Graves here to speak. I see your staff, I see a student and a parent. This is pretty special. I was trying to do the math and think of it when I saw Jonah out there in the crowd. So Jonah was a freshman when I first got to Sycamore, and his sister was a senior. But now to see him kind of come up, and see him out there is pretty exciting. So with that, Rhonda, we're ready for you.
Okay, thanks. Welcome again to Opportunity House. This is the second meeting, board meeting that I've been able to host here. My first year was four years ago, so we hosted here, and tried to, you know, find out how this gets done. And then the next two years, I don't know what it's like. So he's going to be back here in Opportunity House and hosting board meeting. I'd like to introduce you to my staff members, John Arro and Monica Messenbrink, and they are going to be, they bear the weight and the accolades for the videos you're going to see. They're the ones that did the hard work. I sort of sent them to Kelly, and Kelly and I did the rest. So I know we have some new board members, but Opportunity House just implemented another mandate just amongst themselves, and they just lifted it on Monday. So at this time, I'm not going to do a tour. Our Life School section is actually, you know, down this long hallway, and then we have our own hallway down there, and there's a door, number three, that says Life School on it. So maybe next year, for those of you that are new, or those of you that are interested, we can go down and look at the Life School area. I just opted not to do that tonight because of their procedures and precautions. So, that being said, I have two or three videos for you to watch, so I will speak less and will watch more. And, oh, I do want to say one thing, I'm sorry. While you're reading this too, this is something I share with parents, it sort of is an overview of Life School. And Jonah is going to be 22 in June, so this is his last year, and we are going to miss him. And if anybody wants to talk to us about that later, about maybe getting him to come back every once in a while. Anyway, so basically, this is what Life School does. All of our students have IEPs, obviously, they do need to be 18, and we do run two separate programs. The first one is the transition program, the second one is developmental training. All right, everybody get up. Okay, so the first video is the photo story correctly, and you'll see, there's lots of pictures of us in there, is that right? But we do have lots of people that come in and speak with us, you'll see some faces you recognize. One of them, Officer Hooper's in, he's way at the end, so you can't really picture him. But we try to just work on all those community-based skills, and go ahead and...
Oh, should we get the lights on?
Yeah. All right, so that's one. We do have nine students this year. Two of our students come from out of district, so we have seven students that transferred from Sycamore High School, and two that are able to come from out of district. And next year, we're going to look about the same, we should have nine or possibly 10 students in Life School. So we just keep plugging along, between nine and 12 we've had. One of the opportunities that we've got here in this area is this partnership in our, with Northwestern Medicine, the DeKalb District Ramp, and the Illinois Department of Rehabilitative Services. Our students go through a application process, where they have to have interviews and long, you know, lots of paper filled out, and they go to the hospital and they go through this application process, and if they're selected, they become interns at Project Search. So Project Search, this is, we will be entering the fourth year of Project Search coming this fall, so we've done three years. So there's a couple slides on here of some of our Project Search interns, but it's such an awesome opportunity. We like them to come to Life School first, and then their very last year with us, become Project Search interns, because once they complete the internship, they can't come back to us at Life School, they have to move on. And they really, really work on getting them competitive employment, which is something we don't, as a group, do. We work on their vocational skills, but we don't really get the jobs. We try to get parents associated with agencies that will help them get the jobs, but Project Search has been a really unique opportunity for this area.
Do you want me to play that video longer?
Yeah, go ahead, yes. I'm not sure which one this is, but, okay, this is the Cincinnati Children's brief overview of what Project Search is and how that started.
My hours are 7:30 to 4:15 every day. Inside one of Cincinnati's top banks, you'll find new employee Edie Bowman crunching numbers. However, Edie's journey to getting hired at Fifth Third Bank's central file room is different than most. She has a disability, autism, but that didn't stop her from pursuing her goal of getting a full-time job at her high school.
I've been using good organizational skills, being part of a team, and giving good eye contact.
Edie joins a growing list of graduates from a program that started at Cincinnati Children's called Project Search, the brainchild of Aaron Riley.
I was the nursing director of the emergency department here at Cincinnati Children's, and I happened to look out in the lobby and was struck by the fact that many of the people coming to us as patients were people with disabilities. And yet, when I checked behind the scenes, there weren't many opportunities for these young people to grow up and continue to be involved in children's as employees.
Aaron partnered with Susie Bukowski at Cincinnati Children's, and together they came up with a Project Search curriculum. It focuses on young people with disabilities between the ages of 18 to 22. In their final year of high school, those students leave the classroom and move to Cincinnati Children's, or another host business, to intern for the entire school year.
Many of the young people have had low expectations for them, from family members, from schools, and we have to change that in a very short period of time. And so, we're looking at things like grooming and hygiene, communication, problem-solving skills, independence and time management.
Project Search is an intensive nine-month course for a group of 10 to 12 students that involves a combination of classes, skill assessments, skills training, and evaluations from a team including the instructor, managers, and skills trainers. Each day begins and ends with an instructor keeping them on track.
We do a lot of reflection in Project Search. Every day, at the end of the day, we come back, and I'll ask them, what did you learn about yourself today? What can you take from today and improve tomorrow? Because I feel like that's so important.
Today, Project Search is beyond the walls of Cincinnati Children's, and has expanded to more than 500 programs across the U.S. and the world.
Our overall employment rate among all of our programs is 75.5%, and that makes us one of the best, if not the best, transition program in the United States.
We understood that individuals with disabilities through Project Search is an untapped market. It was an untapped recruitment stream that we could have access to. Bring them in, train them on the types of jobs that we have, give them the skills needed so that they can transition into permanent employment. And we've seen great success with that here at Fifth Third, but we've also seen great success with employment in the communities as well.
Also expanding the variety of jobs, Project Search graduates now work in a range of industry sectors. Cengage, an educational services and publishing company, recently joined a growing list to offer not just training and marketable skills, but opportunities for career growth that includes benefits, incentives, and retirement options.
I'd love to run all my employees through those classes I would, about budgeting and about money, and how to handle difficult situations. That life piece, combined with being in a real-life work environment, is what made Project Search completely different than anything else that I've ever seen, and that's why those folks are able to make that transformation be successful.
A key part of the success is definitely that both sides see and learn something new about the other.
Changing the culture of families and the general perception of people with disabilities is what Project Search is all about. Just ask Edie.
My favorite thing about coming to work every day is getting all the work done and being on task.
To change the culture of businesses and organizations, to change the culture of just the general public about the perception of people with disabilities and what they can and can't do.
I'm awfully proud because of this hospital and Project Search, there are thousands of people with disabilities working around the United States and the world that wouldn't have been otherwise, had it not been for this program.
And lastly, we just have a couple pictures of some of our students that have gone to Project Search, so we'll end mine with this. No, that's, that's okay. Here we go. So, you can see their names and kind of where they've gotten jobs. Thank you all for watching.
Rhonda, could you have the...
You got the lights on?
Why don't you turn on for just a second?
Okay.
Anybody have any questions for on the fours?
Rhonda, is there ever work done to have more companies become part of Project Search?
I don't know that for sure. I know that each Project Search team, you know, Rockford has one, and we have one, we all have a host business, and ours is Northwestern Medicine. But they did talk about Fifth Third was in there as one of the stakeholders. So I do believe that they do try to reach out farther than just hospitals. Hospitals, just, they're such a large organization, and order, you know, offer so much, you know, opportunity and different things that our students can do or be trained to do. So I do know from talking to the coordinator that they are trying to find more businesses. It's not always an easy feat to get more people to partner with us, but they have looked at some of our grocery stores, some of our restaurants, just to see if they can expand as well with other partnerships. The partnership with Northwestern is amazing. This is such a great opportunity for us, we want to keep it around. We're a little low on numbers for next school year, because it just varies from year to year, but we think, we feel like we can still stay partners, even if we're low numbers, because in the next year, we still may have more students than we have currently. So we don't have any students for this coming school year that are going to be part of Project Search, but that doesn't mean the following year we won't. So we continue to enjoy that partnership, and we want it to stay going here in our community. If it goes away, it goes away, right? It doesn't come back. And so, they worked really hard, and they have six students for this coming school year, so they're working really hard to keep it here.
It just must have been an off year.
It was, yeah, a little bit of an off year.
I know they reached out to Oregon School District, I mean, they're really branching out more than just Sycamore, Genoa, and the county even, because that's how it counts.
Yeah, and looking for students not just with an IEP, but students with a 504 plan as well. So it really can expand more than just students with an IEP, and what does that look like, right, for those job skills so that they can get jobs?
How can we make that opportunity even more known to the businesses in town? Because I talked to a lot of business owners that are struggling to find employees, and I would think that at least one of those industries would be able to support a program like this.
I would think so too. Kyle Gertis in DeKalb, so his team is the one that really partner with Project Search. We partner with them to get our students in there. And I know that this year, they had some challenges, they went to a lot of businesses that didn't partner with them for this year. But yeah, if you ever want to talk with Kyle, I could set you up with him. If you have some, any opportunities you think that would want to partner with Project Search, they're always looking. And I mean, we are always looking at Life School, obviously, not for job opportunities, but certainly volunteer opportunities, and opportunities for our students, obviously, to learn skills. And post 22, looking for a job. So just so you know that, Jonah needs a job.
Just to build off Eric's question, first of all, thank you for this wonderful presentation. I really liked the videos too, so it's nice. Just with COVID, I know like a lot of businesses and industries have a lot more remote offerings. Is there an opportunity to learn about some of the skills related to like remote work that might expand the network of job options?
That's a good question, and my guess would be yes. A lot of these students have already had to do remote learning, so they've learned how to do those skills. And I, you know, some of them could possibly do some data entry, or, you know, I can't think really what they would do online, but, you know, yes. If somebody were to offer it, and say, if you have somebody that we could maybe work this out and work remotely from home on computer, you know, Jonah's got computer skills. So yes, I would say yes. It would be an option, and we've talked about that too. Anybody else?
Couple things to add.
Yes.
No, I was going to say, I just want to say thank you, and I'm so sad that I have, there's going to be no more Malekis. Because Luke is graduating with you. Luke, my youngest is a senior, he got a job at the university, started in January, and I can't tell you how many times he came home, and Jonah knew how to answer his questions. Like he would say, I forgot to, I think I forgot to clock out, and Jonah would be like, well, just leave a no for your supervisor. Because of everything vacation's been here at Life School, and, you know, how to ask for time off, and you've been really helpful for your brother. So I think all kids should have to go through. That and other parents. Yeah.
Couple things to add, I think sometimes we forget that the last couple years, Life School never really shut down.
Right, that's true.
They stayed open, they kept going, when the rest of us were maybe remote, and that's a credit to the staff, students, and families. We all kind of laughed when we saw Darrell in those photos, but I think one thing that's helped us a lot is Darrell has stepped up when Rhonda couldn't be there. Darrell's a familiar face, that when he was at the high school, he had a passion for working with those students, so they knew him. So I think that's a great, great thing, and I think we should draw attention to Darrell, even though we all kind of laugh and he makes us happy. The other thing is just one of my favorite things I get to do every year, and this goes back to when I was at the high school, working with the ABLE, is they would always ask me to sit with students and interview them when they were going through, and it was one of my absolute favorite things. So when I came into this role, Rhonda said, hey, do you want to come interview students, get them ready for Project Search? They got to get ready for these interviews. So I was really excited and had that opportunity, but these are students that remember me as the dean of students too, so I knew that could transition. So I go, I'm more than willing to, but there's no... So I go, I'm more than willing to, but there's no way Jonah or John A. are going to take me serious. They're going to walk into the room, they're going to start laughing, and we're going to lose it from the beginning. And all in, when I was at the high school as the Dean of Students, every time I walked into the ABLE room, John would say, oh, FBI is here. FBI is here. That was like the tip to the rest of the students. The dean's there. So I knew that was going to happen or thought it would. And they came in and they were all so serious. They acted like they didn't know me. We sat across from each other. And then I almost had to tell them at the end, okay, we couldn't break this rule, so let's just talk. I want to know how you guys are doing. And even John walked in, acted like he didn't know me. We made it through the interview. On his way out, he goes, okay, bye FBI. I got it in right at the end, so. But it's still one of my favorite things I get to do every single year. And that goes back to when I soon taught around the night, working with students in these programs as well. So it's been kind of near and dear to me from the beginning in Sycamore, so.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for all you guys.
You're welcome.
So pretty fitting, our next thing is, you know, really the two bookends here. So we have kind of the culmination in the end, and then we have the very beginning or the start of students' experience with the school district. So we have Little Spartans, our EC program here to present. A lot of the team is here, I can see, from teachers to related services to director to coordinator. So I don't know who's speaking first. I think they're all going to tackle it, so I don't know how they want to go about it.
I want to do a quick special ed update, and then I'm going to pass the torch to my EC team. Thank you, Rhonda, Monica, Jonah. Thank you, Jonah, for being here. I so appreciate it. I started my career in, with, as a special education teacher with adults from 18 to 40. So I love that we have our Life School, and I agree. We have our bookends. My focus always is what's going to happen, right, at 22 when they leave our system. And so we should always be thinking that from the time they're three all the way through of how do we give supports and services so at 22, they're ready for whatever their journey looks like once they leave our system. So yeah, this is pretty exciting to have both ends. So I'm going to do just a quick student service update before I pass it on. I always start with empowering all learners to succeed in their world. And our greatest asset is our people, and our highest priority is our students. I love that out of our strategic plan. We got together not too long ago and looked at goals. And one of the things when we were looking at goals, I took everything that I do out of our strategic design. I mean, that's where I go to when I think of what we stand for in Sycamore and then what we stand for as student services. And that we really look at all of our people, right, and all of our students as being such a high priority of how we do business here. Understood service umbrella, there are many parts and pieces of things that fall under that umbrella. One of them is students with an IEP and students with a 504 plan. Special education, as you know, is governed by federal law under Individuals with Disabilities Act for students three. I say three through 21, because that's how the law reads, but the law has changed so that when a student turns 22, if they turn 22 within the school year, so if a student turns 22 in September, that used to be their last day, the day before they turned 22. Now a student can stay with us that school year if they turn 22 within that school year. So they can stay with us until the end of the school year. So we give students and families that option. Some families would like to move on to adult services, which obviously that would be the next part of the journey of looking at how our adult services can support our students at 22. Special education designed as that specially-designed instruction, no cost to parents, to really meet those unique needs of children with disabilities. We're always looking at that free, appropriate, public education in the least restrictive environment. That least restrictive environment can look many ways, and I'll go through that when I go through at least an update on our data. And then students who are eligible under a 504 plan would be a student with a physical or a mental impairment and would have to substantially limit one or more major life activities. And those students require an accommodation plan. 504 started as a law for adults a long time ago, under ADA, American Disabilities Act. It has long been a part of schools, and those students don't need goals, but they do need accommodations to access their education, to be able to have that opportunity to access their education. There is a continuum of service that we look at for all students. General education always being first, so all students are gen ed first. Special education is not a place. It's just supports and services so that our students can access their general education or access their education. In our continuum of service, we, for all of our service providers, we have some push-in, where we push into the classroom, our service providers push in to give those supports and services. Some of our students require that pull-out of the general education, more the resource model, where we may do reading, or writing, or math, social emotional support, behavioral support outside of the classroom. We have special education classrooms. So we're very fortunate in our district to have some specialized special education classrooms for students with only an IEP. So that would be our ABLE for students with more of an intellectual disability and a cross-categorical room. We have that at elementary, middle, and high school. And then our LEAF program for our students with an emotional disability, we also have that at elementary, middle, and high school. We have a self-contained classroom in our EC, but I'll let me talk about what that looks like in early childhood. Some of our students require more supports and services than we have in our gen ed setting. So those students would be in a therapeutic day school. And then after that, for students who need 24-hour care or they need to actually sleep at a setting to get those supports and services, they would be in a residential placement. And then we have students who get homebound for sometimes medical reasons. We do have students who are struggling right now with cancer or other medical things, but we also have students who struggle emotionally with school refusal or school anxiety, deep depression, all of those things. And we give services usually for a small amount of time, six weeks, eight weeks, a couple of months, always trying to get those students back into our schools. So this is our data for this year, for the 21-22 school year. Currently, right now, we have 562 students with an IEP, which is 15% of our overall student population. The state of Illinois is at 15% as well. We range anywhere between 13 and 15%, probably in my seven years that I've done here. It looks a little different usually at the beginning of the year, so when I present in August sometimes or September, it may be 13. By the end of the year, we have made many, many students eligible for special education, so the number increases as the year goes on. We have 60 students, early childhood through 12, that had an IEP and transferred into our district, or they re-enrolled. So that number's a little deceiving because in the last couple of years with our challenges with COVID, we had students who, parents who chose to homeschool, students who went to St. Mary's or Cornerstone, but now they're back. So we've had students who have re-enrolled, but they already had an IEP before they left us, or students who have transferred. We have many students who have transferred into our district from other places. We have 17 students that still currently are in our evaluation process. So even though we only have a couple of weeks left, we're far from done in student services. So we don't have all of our paperwork in yet. We know that there's 17 students, we call it in the Hopper, that are still out there in the evaluation process that could be possibly eligible for special education. We have 15 EC students in the evaluation process, again, with that possibility of eligibility, and they may even have more than that now. But I know that that's what we had.
That was a week ago.
So it could have changed already since I put this together. But this slide is just by building, so total number of students. We didn't do like, we call it the December 1st count. We actually called every building. So this is how many students each building have as when I put this together a week ago. And then you'll see students with IEPs per building. This is EC through elementary. Students with 504 plans at each building. How students that were new to our district or they re-enrolled. So I said it's really a little bit of both. The students in the evaluation process are really all the students that we evaluated this year so far. So in early childhood, we've evaluated 50. And then you can see from there, North Two, North Grove, 13, South Prairie, 13, Southeast, 15, and West, 10. And those numbers would be students who would get an initial IEP, so they haven't had an IEP in the past. So these students would get what we would call an initial evaluation. And then the next slide is our secondary. So our middle school IEPs. You can see that our 504 plans go up by a huge amount by the time you get to middle and high school of students who require accommodations based on known impairment. And then students, again, new to our district or they re-enrolled, and then students in the evaluation process. That number does go down usually by middle and high school. We, you know, we usually have looked at students before that time, right, if they're eligible for an IEP. We currently have 35 students that are in therapeutic day school based on their needs. We had five students move in this year that were already placed at therapeutic day schools. So when I read through the IEP, if they've already had that placement, I follow that recommendation from a team that already had the student. Some of them I had to place, obviously, in therapeutic day schools that were closer to us, because some kids were out of, from our state. We have no students in a residential placement at this time. We have students at the parochial school that get what's called an ISP. So we get proportioned share funds through the state, and those funds are used, we use them for speech-only students. So we evaluate, we do all the evaluation, but at the end of the day, if they're eligible for services and it's speech, then we give speech services to those students. And it's our speech paths who give those services. And eight students who are deaf, hard of hearing, and visually impaired. I think there's a bottom. It's just underneath. I don't know, I can read it, but... Those are just our totals. So again, it's the 562 students with IEPs. We have 170 students in the district with 504 plans. Again, what we look like, feel like, and be like when operating at our ideal best. I feel like that collaborative team, all of us working together, is our ideal best, and it is our ideal best for our students as well. I'm going to give just a quick shout-out to all of our student service staff.
Sorry.
That's okay. I mean, I could, I could just say it if you want. So our coordinators, our special education teachers, our psychologists, social workers, counselors, speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, vision, hearing, itinerants, nurses, paraeducators, building administrators, and then my two assistants, Neely and Tiffany. I gave a shout-out to them because they certainly do an awful lot of student service work for me in the office. And then our goals for the current year, always compliance to IDA and 504 law. So there's a lot of legal compliance pieces under both IDA and 504. So we're always looking at making sure that our IEPs are compliant, our supports and services are compliant, our 504 plans are compliant, and that we are doing all of the things, and I will say, in the state of Illinois, because I get IEPs from all other states. We have more state law, I think, than any other state around because our IEPs could be 62 pages, and I'll get an IEP from another state that's six pages. I'm like, where? I mean, they do the federally mandated pieces, but we have lots of laws. And ISBE has been very, very busy during COVID. I'm not going to go through all of the laws right now, but they have been very busy pushing out all kinds of things for us to be compliant to. Always looking at writing measurable goals and how do we collect data to show that a student is making progress? So with an IEP, those goals, looking at what their needs are and meeting those goals, obviously are crucial to what's in an IEP. And then how do we collect data is always a challenge. So it's the focus of ours to always look at how do we collect our data so that we can show that our students are actually making progress. Being consistent on our paperwork, like I said, ISB has been very busy, so they've changed a lot of our paperwork. And so we have to be compliant with all of the different paperwork pieces, without a doubt, or we get called out by ISBE. Right now, we at least have 100% of all the indicators that ISBE looks at, so we are 100%. We've been compliant except for one time ever that I, in my, my time here, one time we weren't compliant, but it was not due to anything we did that ISBE didn't really want to hear about. So we just cleaned it up and moved on. We look at our, we're going to continue to look at our facilitated IEP process. I know a couple of years ago, I presented on that process that we use for running IEP meetings. At some point, maybe I'll do it again for our new board members, but it's been a super beneficial process, very different than how we used to run IEP meetings, very collaborative. Our parents feel a part of the meetings. Our teams feel like we do it in a collaborative process. And so we want to revisit that because the last couple of years have been so different. So we want to kind of go back, teaching our new staff the process and just kind of, just like you always have to, right, go back to all the things that we put into place. We had a lot of process, a lot of procedure. Sometimes it goes by the wayside a little bit when things get really busy, so we're going to go back to that. PLCs, which is a district goal. It's also a goal in all of the related service groups and the special education groups. They've been working hard on PLCs and what that means and how we really function as a professional learning community. SEL, social emotional learning, always a goal to go really of the district as well, but that being the floor of everything that we do to support students would be that social emotional learning. We have a student service advisory committee. I can't say that we did a whole lot of work in the last couple of years, but we are back at it. So we've been meeting monthly, and that would be all of our department chairs for speech, for social work, for psych, our nurse, as well as our two coordinators, myself and our team leads at the elementary. And we're looking at developing a student service manual for all of our new staff so that we could put everything in there, all, some of all of this, but also a lot of paperwork pieces so that we could just have one place to go for everyone. We also have goals that we've created for ourselves, so we're going to do some work this summer because during the school year, it's pretty challenging to sometimes do the work after school that we would like to do. So we're going to get together this summer. And then we have talked about our early learning center growth for our littlest learners, and I feel like we are meeting that goal and probably exceeding, looking at our little people, our little, our little learners. So I got my big learners, our little learners, and everything in between. Questions for me, otherwise I'm going to turn it over to Neely.
Just a quick question.
Yes, sir.
The new-to-the-district number that was on your slide, what, what does that data signify? What is the purpose of that information?
For me, I look at how that changes our special education numbers because those students that either came back to us, right, because they left, they already had an IEP, or they came with an IEP. So I look at that, that families move here for a reason. And sometimes they move here because of the programming that they hear goes on here in Sycamore, so their students already have an IEP. But it does change the way that I look at our services and supports and how much staff I have as far as special ed teachers, right, social workers, and psychs, because they have to meet that need. So if I think I'm going to have 520 kids and all of a sudden I have 562 kids with an IEP, that changes just for me when I look at kind of that needs assessment for our district. So I, this is the most I've ever had, but I think, and I didn't, I didn't pull it apart, but it's because of the re-enrollment. You know, I think they were already here a couple of years ago, and then they came back to us.
So in, like, your comment on that, it's kind of what I was thinking in terms of, like, it's a draw to people to come to this district. How do they access, like, how does a person understand, oh, this district is a really great district for these support services, so let's come here? Is there some sort of measure that a parent can access to see that? Or is it just by chance?
Usually word of mouth.
Word of mouth? Okay.
So, I mean, you know, parents will talk to each other. Or we have people who moved away. They graduated from Sycamore, and then they had some students with needs, and they wanted to get back to this community. Or there's people from surrounding communities that, you know, just from word of mouth have decided Sycamore is the place to go, and then they try to get a place here so that their children can go here. So I think a lot of things, we don't advertise. And I, there's nothing flashing light anywhere that's, you know, that says that. We're very happy that we have great supports and services for our students. You know, I think our staff works really hard. You know, I think our staff works really hard to give students what they need. Our administrators work really hard to get students what they need. I feel like it's a, it's a great collaborative team to meet the needs of very unique needs of some, some students who have some very significant challenges.
Yeah. Well, and that number's got to be really the biggest measure of, of you guys doing an amazing job. So the higher that number is, I mean, like you're talking about word of mouth and there's no public means, so kudos to you.
There are sites on the internet that actually.
They have to do districts.
Yeah. Or they're out there.
They do.
We are out there.
And I get calls.
And you know, parents who have children with special needs, they're, they're well networked, so.
They are.
That's what I was thinking too, Jim.
The word really does get around.
And they should be well networked.
Yes, absolutely.
I appreciate, right, that our families talk to each other. And usually in the summer, I get many, many calls from people out of state, people from other places, and they just want to know, you know, what does it look like here? What do we have to offer? What are our supports as they're trying to make a decision on where they're going to go or where they're going to move? It's a big decision if you have a student with very significant needs. Any other questions? All right. It's all yours, Neely, and this wonderful EC team.
Hi, guys. I'm Neely Wolf and I am early childhood coordinator for the Sycamore School District. So I am administrator over overseas of early childhood and our littlest learners. So here tonight is Megan Borelli, one of our classroom special ed, Jenna ed teachers. I'll explain more about that in a few minutes. Canyon Armstrong. Karen Old, who's one of our PTs. Heather Porter, who is our speech and language pathologist at Children's Hospital. Oh, that's really fun. That's my phone. I really could turn that off. But I think that's probably why I started calling out, seeing you have my presentation. We'll just call her Gina right there. And then Laurel Copeland, one of our early childhood special ed teachers as well. So you're going to hear from them in a little bit because we're going to drag them into the program. But I really liked the slide where she listed everybody to thank because our team in EC has everybody in there. So we share building with Mr. Rucker at South Prairie and we really enjoy his collaboration and his help at times with some of our friends. But all that listed was there. We have nursing support staff in one of our classrooms. We rely on our South Prairie nurses. We have Miss Cam, our social worker. We have other PTs and OTs. We have evaluation teams. We have our school, our special ed team and eval team, but mostly people are on both of those teams. So we have a lot of fun in EC and I'm really excited to kind of walk you through what kind of some pictures. Rhonda made great videos, mine are more pictures. So we use, kind of going back to the last slide just to talk about some of those pictures. So we use a creative curriculum. So it's a play-based learning environment and one of our, is the box study. I've never seen kids or teachers make so many creative things out of boxes. We had boxes that were in the hallway we were running through. We were building robots out of boxes. We were becoming Amazon drivers. We did everything with boxes that you could picture. Then one of our friends was just, this is such a cool story. We use our vision itinerary from NIA. Dana was able to help us bring in a light box and this opened up her world using some lighted technology. She has been able to super participate in everything within the classroom environment and it's just heartwarming to see her engage in so many different things now. And if you haven't heard around here, elephant and piggy books or anything with pigeon is a big fan of everybody in EC. So we had to put a picture of there, our friend reading his book. We are big fans of early literacy, but he loves to show us all his pictures. So then the next slide just kind of tells you a little bit about our early learning Little Spartans. So everybody calls it preschool, Little Spartans, early learning, EC. And so you hear all those names and it's all us. So we run Monday through Thursday, because we're very, very busy on Friday, evaluating new students and meeting new families. And our first session is nine to 11:30 in the morning and then one to 3:20 in the afternoon. And that shortened time in the afternoon is due to transportation. So what kind of is the benefit for students coming from the community is we use the creative curriculum, which is a research-based early childhood curriculum. We follow the Illinois learning standards, but we're exposing them to district curriculum. We're building our kindergarten students, right? So we're exposing them to the second step, the Xander handwriting, the euphric math and the jolly phonics. Our kids go into kindergarten singing all their jolly phonics songs and knowing the movements and the hand movements. So we're building those kindergartners. We want to make that transition to kindergarten as easy as possible for all our students. Just kind of repeating a little bit of what Literate told us, but just kind of why do we have to have preschool? Why do we have little kids running around South Prairie pulling wagons? Fifth graders find this very entertaining. One little fifth grader stopped me one day and says, "Do you just take kids on walks all day?" And I said, "Sometimes, that's what I do." So it's really, that goes back to that law, free and appropriately public education, which is our federal law that starts at the age of 30. Technically in Illinois, we need to start meeting and evaluating families from the age of 2.9. So we start having those conversations when they're about two and a half to just pack before their third birthday. And I meet a lot of new families who've never had a kid in Sycamore, who are coming out of early intervention services and worried about what does that school transition look like? How do they bring their little kid, drop them off? And these team ladies over here are amazing at meeting new little kids every day. But they meet new little kids in all the months of the year, including one friend that joined Mrs. Copeland during about three weeks ago. So we meet friends all year long. And I always refer to students as friends because I want them to understand that we're building that relationship. So screenings, we talked about that, were required by law to screen students and identify children with special needs and for related services before they turn 30. So they're able to start our Little Spartans program on their third birthday. Children receive special education and related services with non-disabled peers at least restrictive environment. And then that's one Illinois administrative code says that we have to have those classrooms be a blended model of 70% students without an individual education plan. So that's where we build in our Little Spartans blended learning program, where we have our tuition-based students along with our IEP students. Communication. So I should really have Miss Porter come up and join here. But, so we are all about pushing in communication and building that, building that language. So my friend here has a core board, so he's using that pictures to help us facilitate with him communication. And he's talking about his baby doll. And we have another student who's using some technology. And this year has been really exciting is that we've been able to partner with the Illinois assisted technology program and get some of our students screened for assisted technology devices through a grant program with Illinois State. So Miss Porter has been very detailed in trying to get all of that paperwork completed. The packet is very thin, but we partnered with some families to start that process and one who's almost completed. And that little boy is very, very excited to have a way to communicate with us. So this is just Mrs. Armstrong's center time and Mrs. Borelli's center time. So they are, they're group times, not their center time, they're group time. They're all kind of, I think Mrs. Borelli's doing jolly phonics there. And we have amazing pair of professionals that work within our classroom environments. You can see Ms. El right there. So we're supported by amazing staff, but we incorporate all those group skills that you want for kindergarten. So we're teaching these kids at three what it's like to sit. Maybe they have some adaptive seats. There's a little boy with a tray on his communication board, but we're all about how do we get these students to be the best Sycamore learners for the long term. Learning. So this is the little girl with the light board again. This is our friend who's going to kindergarten. We had a transition meeting today, but he can read books like you couldn't believe. And he came in and has made so much progress in the last three years and he had to get a slide on our slideshow. And then one of our littlest learners that we met last September, October, and he has just come in at three. And he came into the big, we call it the big boy, big girl classroom, Miss Borelli's morning classroom, and he holds his own. So no little three-year-olds getting pushed around in there. So he loves to tell us what he's doing and playing with his cars and trains. This is actually Mrs. Porter's child. Well, that's kind of the unique thing. A lot of district employees, including my daughter, Mrs. Porter's daughter, Mrs. Copeland's daughter, or son next year, Mrs. Copeland's daughter has been in the past, come in, are members of our community. So we're serving our district. We partner with Oskar Jr., which is the daycare portion of our district. And so our students can be here for longer periods of time, but we also bring our own kids. We want to have them be Sycamore Spartans too. Then I don't know if she's in the pet center, I think because she has the.
Yeah.
Yeah, the pet center. Yeah, because I was going to say she does either the store or the pet center. We also really appreciated being included in the Spartans read together. The kids got a really big kick out of that. And we were able to adapt some of their reading, but their kids were like, "I saw you on Facebook." And I said, "Yep, that's where I was reading." And then Mrs. Borelli turned for her pet center, she turned her sensory table into a fishbowl. So it's playing with a fishbowl. So playing outside, as if you are not familiar, we have an adaptive playground outside and we love to spend time outside. This winter has been a little bit challenging, but today was a perfect day to be outside. So we enjoy having that play space right next to our preschool and the kids are always outside, always happy, and we love to share that with the community as well. Well, this is my, one of my typical slides. So Mrs. Copeland taught this activity and then Myla decided the next day to teach it. And Nelson and Bennett were the best students in the picture. So she, but she was teaching exactly the same way and they were sorting the same way as they had learned the day before. So what I thought was really, really cool, I just snapped the picture when it happened to be in there and I said, "What are you doing?" And she's like, "Ivy, Mrs. Copeland." And it was really exciting just to see how they want to take ownership of their own learning at a little age. And then this is some more friends playing together and learning together. So I think the biggest thing that we always stress at preschool is we might be playing, but we're learning and we're engaging and we're learning those pre-academic skills at the same time. So we were just exploring some of our bugs, writing a letter slash drawing together. And magnet tiles, if you don't have any magnet tiles, they are the highlight of early childhood classrooms. Mrs. Cam is our social worker and she's doing just kind of a group facility play game. We're always teaching those kids coping skills and learning together, how we can work together, build friendships. And I think that's going to be a big part of our program for next year is we're going to have a lot of kids who've never really been outside of their homes because of COVID. So where do we go back to? Where do we draw back to some of our developmental practices and helping kids build relationships? Because they were born in COVID. We have best buddies that love to hang out together and they always are smiling and then also always willing to play together and that's Mrs. Armstrong's center. See, I told you, the sorting activity of bugs and birds was a big hit.
Domestic and wild animals.
Oh, domestic, well. I just called them bugs. You have to clarify because that makes even better. One of the things we also, we always are looking at what kindergarten teachers are looking for. One of the things that I got the beauty of the privilege of is I'm the administrator of the kindergarten PLC. So I hear every month from the kindergarten teachers what their obstacles are and then I'm always brainstorming and thinking in my head, okay, what can we incorporate in preschool, but also how do we get our students who have IEP services ready for kindergarten? And kindergarten teachers really like cutting skills. So I wanted to make sure that we put that out there. And then play center. So we do the creative curriculum again. So we just added our pet unit and that was a hit. So I will tell you, I sent Mr. Rucker an email one night that just says, "Horses." And the subject was horses. The context of the email is, "Two horses are coming to South Prairie." So two horses showed up to South Prairie. We had maybe close to 20 dogs. We had lizards, we had hamsters, gerals, guinea pigs, cats, tails from, kittens from tails for our pet study, which was so cool because the restrictions had been lifted on families and they all brought those animals. So, and the kids, we did prep until the horses were coming and asked for permission and all that kind of stuff. But it was really cool to be able to bring their families in and have them bring that environment, show their kids, their friends, their teachers, part of their home life and just really open up that relationship that we try to build. So we use an app called Seesaw where we take pictures all day long of what's happening in preschool and you can see it. And so does Oskar Jr., the daycare portion. So you might be in a meeting. I have definitely a little bit to Steve and Nick, but I've been in a meeting and gotten a picture of my kid, but it's heartwarming to know that your kid is well taken care of, they're enjoying themselves and they're engaging in learning. Community screeners. So I would say this has been one of our biggest obstacles this year. We have met, as we have noticed in the other slides, we had met so many new friends. And one of the things we met them through was community screeners. We provided a community screener September, October, November, January, February and April of this year. You can see the amount of students we screened and then we picked them up for speech only services or full IEPs. One thing, obviously I'm new to this position, was that we hadn't really picked up students in community screeners for full IEPs, for them to pursue full services previously, previous to this year. We've found maybe one or two, but as you can, if you add up all those totals, we found quite a few more than that. I do expect that trend to continue as students weren't having as many accesses to early intervention and other services due to COVID. But this does affect our numbers of students that we serve and have to evaluate. And then we did find five students who had registered as Little Spartans eligible for IEPs after they were enrolled in our preschool. Current program data. We currently have 90 students, 52 are tuition-based students whose families pay a monthly tuition. Students with IEPs are 38 and speech students are 25. Some of those speech students, those are speech only students. So Mrs. Porter serves our 38 students if they qualify for speech services and she serves some of our students who are registered tuition-based students who also receive speech services as well. And we have Mrs. Revere who comes to South Prairie twice a week. And as Mrs. Smith, our very, very helpful administrative assistant, will tell you, that door goes all day long on a half hour basis of kids coming in and out for speech therapy. So it's kind of, we love to see new faces. So we have currently, for next year, we have 90 students registered and we have a waiting list of 14 students. I will tell you that 90 is as of last week and we have accepted four new Little Spartans since then who will receive an IEP services. So we've evaluated for early intervention transitions from early childhood. So into early childhood services, those are the students that we meet through early intervention services. We evaluated 16 and we are still working with four more till the end of May. And then we are working with students that will meet June, July and August in our summer evals. And we have 10 students out of that 16 who are given full IEPs, three who are given speech only IEPs and three students who didn't qualify for any services. Okay, now you get to meet the amazing teachers of the early childhood program and they are going to invite you to cast out some playboxes and kind of explain to you what they teach during class.
Hi, friends. It's actually like you're preschoolers, so you're not nervous. Okay, so, sure. So we presented to you before and found you guys smart and decided that when we are talking about how important, purposeful, joyful hands-on learning is, we should give you some hands-on learning, right? So we're going to practice what we practice. So we put together some invitations to play for you with a sheet inside that gives an explanation, a little bit about our curriculum model, a little bit about why we do what we do, and then some examples of how we would use the materials in the box to work with our students and meet the, on our early learning standards. So there was a lot to unpack, unpack there, but I'm going to give you an example. So we are Jenna teachers and special ed teachers. So I'm just going to show you one example of how one small moment of our day might be differentiated for student needs. All right, so in your box, okay, you have some stickers. And I know, you know, you're going to say, okay, stickers on paper, that's fun, right? Okay, go play with that. But I'm going to tell you about how we would use these things to help meet student need, right? So I might have one student here who developmentally is soaring through his literacy skills. He's got his letter identification, he's got his letter sounds, all right? Nice job, okay? Someone's going to see you at home, this is awesome. So I'm going to put some stickers on a paper and have him try to write what the sticker is, right? So he's working on those literacy skills. Awesome job. You need a pencil, but there's a crayon, anything will work, okay? And then I have a student over here who I'm working with who has an IEP. And so he's also going to use the same material, but we're working on fine motor skills. So I'm going to have my para work with him.
So I'm gonna have my parent work with him, and we're kind of peeling off his stickers, so we're practicing that fine motor, which is one of the fundamental pieces that we need before we're writing. And, you know, he also receives some speech services. So Heather's gonna come in, and she's gonna have him request more every time he needs a sticker. So these two are very different developmental paths right now, but they're working together with the same material. And this is just one example of how we're doing activities like this throughout the entire day, and how important it is that we are meeting the needs of all of our learners in a fun, play-based way, while we're doing a research-based curriculum. And that's all I got. My taste is very rare, I guess. But yeah, you know, we invite you to come anytime. It's very difficult for us to explain just how much we do, I think, in a half hour of our day. But Mrs. Welp has done an amazing job, I do wanna give a shout out to her. It's an awesome, amazing job, but it's really hard. And she's done a great job growing our program, supporting us, so.
They're an easy group to support. They are so focused.
I'm very right. If you have any questions, I mean, you can read through, but I think this is a good reminder, just keep this, you can let Nelson use it, okay? But I think it's a good reminder for you just to know that this is where we start out, right? And everything in these boxes is meaningful, it's purposeful, and intentional because of the way we facilitate our lessons with students, and because we get to know our students and our families, so.
So I'm always amazed that students join your program throughout the year. And I guess that happens.
The minute they turn three, sometimes.
Classroom as well, that people would move to town and join your classroom.
Yeah.
But doesn't it present its own set of challenges? Because you also need to adapt your learning to their own special needs?
Yeah, it does. That's why we're just amazing at what we do.
I think it has to be like so individualized. Everything we do is so individualized for every student, so that when we get a new student, and it's just, that's just another individualized plan you have to make. And you meet them where they're at. I mean, we just, we base the learning off of, you know, where they're at developmentally, and we work with them and boost them. You know, it does pose challenges when we have new students coming in, but it's what we do. And this is, you know, we're, this is early childhood, and, you know, it's, it's nice to see sometimes where, you know, your students that you've had all year, where they're at. And then they're the little mother hens, or, you know, they just help pick up, and it's just.
I think it's so rewarding to see just. That's the beauty of a blended mixed-age classroom, too, is that we do have threes who need a lot of support sometimes, but we have fives who are my helpers, who I used to, you know, that's where, what they need socially, emotionally, right? They need to be those leaders, they're good models. I pair kids up, we all do, right? So I think people would think that it's difficult to have three, four, and five-year-olds together, but honestly, I wouldn't want it any other way, because they balance each other out. I get help when I need it. You know, they're teaching our younger ones those empathy skills and the social skills that they need. And, you know, honestly, I think sometimes you have a new three come in, and then a four or five-year-old is suddenly, you know, like, that pulls them up to where they need to be. Because now they get to be the leader and the helper, and they're modeling, and they wanna read with the youngest one. So I think the mixed-age piece really helps that. But in flexibility, we just, you know, I think we have a really solid foundation and core of what kids need developmentally at this age, and what a high-quality program looks like, and what we, that's what we're trying to do, right? But that flexibility piece is important, and knowing that the needs of the kids come first, and my plan is secondary, really, to what I need to do for my students in my classroom. So we let them guide us.
Are you able to speak a little bit about, not so much, well, I guess it's the education piece as well, but the social culture of taking your tuition-based students and not building relationships with kids with special needs and not feeling like you're singling them out?
Sure, sure. I mean, I think it's just embedded in what we do, right? So we, our classroom is our second home. And I think, honestly, sometimes those attitudes are adopted as we get older. And when you're three, four, and five, you're a kid. And so we just make sure that everything we're providing can be adapted or differentiated for any level of student. I would never give one kid, he's gonna play with magnet tiles, he knows how to build and you don't, right? I would have the magnet tiles out, but then I'm gonna know that maybe my friend over here needs an adult to support that peer interaction. And so he might not be building a 3D structure, but he's gonna work on requesting more. He's gonna work on adding a block to another peer's building. So I think it just is all about how we welcome everybody.
But are you, between those two students, are you working to build a friendship or relationship?
Oh, absolutely. They don't need us to do that. They do it themselves, yeah. I mean, obviously, that's what we model.
I mean, there are students that we are working on those social emotional skills, and getting them to, I mean, my student that I just transferred from kindergarten today, that's what we're working on, that peer engagement, so getting him to play with his peers. So there's an adult they're modeling. When we're playing with magnet tiles, I'm there modeling how we're gonna add someone else's structure, how we listen to how they're playing before we join in and add something. So there's just a lot of modeling.
I think I was saying about how everybody needs something different, too.
You're qualified, jump in as a parent.
Yeah.
You know, when Nels or Nelson comes and shares stories about how school was, he'll be talking about his interactions or his friends and students. And I may know, just because of my profession, this is probably a student with an IEP or has more challenges or needs, but he doesn't present it like that at all. It's just his discussion on what they did on play or learning side by side. And I think that's a credit to you guys and exactly what you speak to. So I see that as a parent.
Where does it fall apart? You know, at a young age, that doesn't enter the conversation, but then.
That's a good question.
It's one of my favorite parts of teaching early childhood, I think, is just the, just the pure excitement about life. And they still have that, right? Someone could pee their pants, and nobody's gonna laugh at them. No one, you know, they just don't, they don't judge other kids, so.
I think a core value in our program is respect. And so we respect all children. And I treat my students the way I would wanna be treated as an adult. Exactly, we don't shame, we don't laugh, we don't giggle, we don't mimic, we don't mock. You know, something happens with a student, it's a teachable moment for everybody, including me. Okay, we, something happened, let's figure out how to solve this problem, you know? And what can we do together? We have a child who's having a meltdown, right? Their senses are overstimulated, they need a break, they don't have the ability to verbalize what they need. Some of my older students or my other children who don't have an IEP or don't have those needs recognize that this kid, that doesn't feel good. So what can I do to help demonstrate that empathy, right? And that's up to us then to, to teach and model and say, hey, do you remember this is their favorite book? Can you go get that book for me while I sit here and help her calm down? Can you go get some tissues for me? I think that would help her feel better. Who can go get the family picture?
Yep.
So we come together as a family, yeah.
And I can say, just this week, we have an old, a five-year-old with an IEP who was holding the hand of a three-year-old coming in off the bus. So it goes both ways. It's not just the tuition-based peer models that are being the peer models for the IEP students, it's vice versa. And I think that that's the beauty of this blended program, is that, you know, there's so much that students and children with special needs have to teach us, as well as us to them. And so that's the great thing about it.
Also, I think it's the honesty. Like, we have a student who is trached, and, well, they will ask, like, why does he have that? Why, why does that person always work with him? Why don't I have someone who's with me all the time who's honest? Because that little boy needs that to help his breathe. And what do you, do you breathe different? He breathes a little bit different than you. Well, so one mom wrote me an email, is he in his classroom? And I said, he comes to visit, like, do you know what I mean? So we don't ever shy away from those honest conversations about what makes us a little bit different. But we already have kids requesting to go to kindergarten with their special ed peers, and he'd be in my classroom. And we're also partnering those kids up who have been together and can be support systems. Like, Mr. Rucker and I already have talked about who's going to South Prairie tuition-based-wise, and who's going to South Prairie with IEPs, and who would be good models and who would help each other out? Who knows the rules and expectations and can say, hey, I think you need your blurb card. Where's your blurb card? You're not supposed to be talking. You know, who can, how can they be that little teacher for them, what kid carrying them through? And they don't think anything about it, because they've just accepted that they're this classroom community. And these teachers do an amazing job, and the support staff that's in our program, they're always just joining in to figure out how to support. And we're not any different. We've had struggles with staffing, with COVID, with absences, with everything that the district has struggled with. We have struggled with an AC, too. And it's just how do we get through the day, and how do we make sure everyone's learning, growing, and safe? I mean, I have two, I have two kids, right? And one went through the program, and my son will start next year. But a draw for me, not as a, as a staff member, but just as a community member, is that I know that my child is going to get this amazing exposure to all different types of learners. And I want that for her, you know? And I think that's a unique strength of our program.
So I have a lot of questions.
Oh, are they for you?
But I don't wanna, some of this may be minutia, so I'll try to refine to some of the best questions. But I wanna preface it with just saying that I really think that the work that you guys are doing is beyond important, and it has a huge amount of weight. And there's also, I think there's, it could be, it could go so well, or it could go so badly. I get nervous just thinking it must take some really special people to do what you guys do. So that's a, one, I can just tell just from the enthusiasm that's at that. I'm sure these students are in great places, so that's wonderful. To some of my questions, I guess, my first point, you mentioned something about staff, being able to utilize this, and I get really excited by that, because accessibility to childcare as an employer, I think, is something that is so hit or miss, especially in the US compared to other nations. So to hear that Sycamore School District, as an employer, has an offering for early childcare, to me is really exciting. But what I'm more particular can, yeah, I'm interested to see how that blends with Oscar in terms of timing. So like, I saw a gap, and I'm assuming it's a morning program and an evening program, or an afternoon program?
Like, Nick could probably talk speed to that.
So then as a parent, then, or even as an employee of the district, and, you know, you're a young parent, and you have a young child, and you want access to this education or some sort of child services, how does Oscar Jr. integrate to that? Just really quick comment.
So 7:30, so Oscar Jr. opens at 7:30, and sometimes we're beating each other to the door. And then closes at 5:00, and sometimes we joke around, and I'll say, was Nels still there? And she'll be like, Ava will be like, no, he's gone, or, oh, yep, he's still there. So it's 7:30 to 5:00, Monday through Thursday, at a $35 rate a day on top of our monthly tuition.
7:30 to 5:00?
Yeah.
In the evening?
Yeah.
Wow.
It's a daycare program.
It's a daycare program. So they, what happens is they go from, like, say, let's use a morning kid as an example. We'll use Nels, and then we'll use Ava. So Nels comes, can come in as early as 7:30, he doesn't have to. He can be dropped off anytime between 7:30 and 5:00. Those are the hours that are open. So at 7:30, he comes in, he's offered breakfast, he gets his day started at 9 o'clock, he goes to Mrs. Copeland's room. From 9:00 to 11:30, he's in preschool. Then he returns back to Oscar Jr. at 11:30, and spends his day from 11:30 to whenever he's picked up, which could be as early or late as 5 o'clock.
That is, that's awesome. So there's complete continuity.
Yep, and so then.
Wow, okay, that's really cool.
My daughter, who could be dropped off at 7:30, goes from 7:30 to 1 o'clock in Oscar Jr. And then she's with Mrs. Borelli in the afternoon from 1:00 to 3:20, and then she goes back to Oscar Jr. to finish her day. So they have nap time, which my daughter particularly does not like. But they have nap time, they provide lunch. So lunch and breakfast and snacks and care are provided for, Courtney provides, or Mrs. Wells provides that for $35 a day, Monday through Thursday.
Is there any opportunities for, for staff in terms of, like, in the district? Is there any opportunity for them to come in and volunteer, to like, how does the district, I guess, how does their access to district employees differ from the general public?
It doesn't. So as long as you sign up, and you make it before the waiting list closes, if you're a district employer or a community, you can access that. And one thing that you'll see in a future, future slides, is Oscar Jr. takes 4Cs, which is community coordinated childcare. And Little Spartans is about three pieces of paper away from taking community childcare. So we will take 4Cs as well next year, which would be, we're supplementing for families who receive childcare subsidies. So we're bringing up more opportunities for families.
So that was my next question again, and sorry.
You're fine, you're good.
So satisfying, satisfying that 70% blend between tuition and IEP students, what, how well are we doing that?
We're trying really hard. So if you walked into any of my classrooms right now, these ladies can tell you they're not teaching a 70/30 classroom. They're teaching a 50/50 classroom, probably. Some of them, depending, maybe Mrs. Borelli might go a little bit more than that in one of her classrooms. So our goal is always to start off, but we've added so many kids with IEPs this year, we just couldn't keep up that 70/30 ratio. So when we're trying again for next year, that's why Mrs. Bodine couldn't be here today. She's our self-contained morning teacher, and she teaches blended in the afternoon for us. We are continuing to see if we can open more spaces up for next year to continue to offer more tuition-based peers options, but also having more options to move around that 70/30 wiggle room. When I was meeting last week, we were talking about how many of our kids with IEPs are going to kindergarten. And we do have quite a few, but those seats are almost all full with students who'll be eligible by August for IEPs.
Why is there 14 people on a waitlist?
14 people are on a waitlist because I can't have everyone come in right now until I meet the rest of the students for the summer for the special education.
So is it pretty much imminent that they will be accepted, or is there a good chance they may not be?
There might be a chance that they're not if we can't open another section.
And what would be the hindrance to opening another section?
We need to hire a teacher.
We haven't gotten any qualified candidates yet.
Yeah, we're looking for qualified.
You have the resources, but you don't have the candidates.
Correct.
Okay, is there, what's the student-teacher ratio in the classroom?
So it depends on the needs of the students, so that's kind of a harder question to answer, but we cap out at 15 students per classroom.
Okay, got you. And do you know what percentage of staff utilizes this program? In terms of, like, of the 90 students, how many of our staff students?
That, I don't have an exact estimate, a decent amount. I can't give you an exact number, I can count off the top of my head. There's a lot of our staff are using our program, and a lot, that Oscar Jr. component really does help staff. Because they were able to provide, you know, that's why my daughter's there, she has summer to go during the day. But it's also for, like, that daycare portion is really helping. We have quite a few, I would say, almost all, not all, but quite a few of our Oscar Jr. families, if not half of them, are Sycamore student, or staff members' children.
Last question, sorry.
You're good, you're good, you can keep the last question.
What concerns do you see if you raise the per pupil cost of tuition to help have this program cover its costs completely?
Access to the community that we won't be able to serve the students that we wanna serve. We wanna be the program for everyone. We want to make sure that we have kindergarten-ready students. If we price our price too high, we're going to have families who are already struggling. I talk to all the families who we have to help with payment plans a month, or, that's kind of why I pursue 4Cs, why we're pursuing the foster care grant as well. We want to make sure we're not turning away families that the price is their hindrance. And I don't ever wanna see a child not have access to early childhood education. And I think if we, if our price goes too significantly high, that, especially with just rising inflation and gas prices and everything, I don't want someone to have to not prioritize our child's education because we're costing them too much.
Do you know how much the district is subsidizing the cost of the program compared to tuition?
So we're not subsid, we have.
I shouldn't say the word subsidy, but do you know what the deficit is?
At this point, we would have to have all the classrooms we currently have open to serve our special education students. So we, the tuition-based students are a bonus to us, and we need them legally to provide the services we have. So we would be in trouble if they didn't come. So if we priced ourselves too high and we didn't have the tuition-based students to come, we would be in trouble with the state of Illinois and have to file compliance reports that we weren't providing that least restrictive environment.
And we did used to have to file compliance reports, so we were not always compliant. I call it the naughty list, so we were on that list with ISBE. We had to go to classes, we had to put quarterly reports together, because we had only special ed students and a couple of role models when I first started. So our program did not look anything like it does now. And when we went to any of those classes that we were required to go to by ISBE, that was obviously the push for the whole state of Illinois. There are still some programs that are basically only special education students, which is not a benefit, really, to all students. And so it's an unfunded mandate, which like, there's many unfunded mandates. And so it's an unfunded mandate, which like there's many unfunded mandates out there. So this one is as well. But it is a mandate to look at how you bring in your community students to blend with your special education students. The ISBE is a little bit more lenient in our three to five-year-old K-12 at 70/30. They're much more stringent. When we got to that 50/50 mark, 50% community kids and 50% specialized kids, we did come off the list and we're still off that list thankfully. I don't want to go back on. We're still off that list as being compliant to what ISBE would like to see for early childhood. ISBE and the state, I mean, the federal government as well, huge push, right, for early education, early childhood, knowing that catch these kids at three. And even if it costs, and it is, there's a cost. We could never be flush with staffing and the amount that special education costs. And it's a costly program and it always will be for our students with unique needs. Like you said, we have a full-time nurse for a student with a trache. Next year, we'll probably have two trache students. They'll both need full-time nurses. So those are things we have to give, right, to support them. But looking at the benefits of where we're at now and to our community is huge. I always think maybe someday the federal government will fund early childhood. I haven't seen that day.
No man got it.
You never know. Or the state of Illinois has always spoken about spending tons of money in early childhood. I also haven't seen that where they have given us, you know, funding to do what we do at this point, but you never know.
Well, I just, and again, my primary concern was just accessibility to the public and like hearing about the time span that you have. And in terms of hearing about utilization from staff, that's everything. And so hearing from you that you're concerned with tuition costs being like, there's like a direct correlation to accessibility to me makes a lot of sense. The waitlist was concerning, but hearing that you're, that we're hiring for it and it's available.
And we would love to take anyone in the community, get to a place where we could take anyone who wants to come. We're not trying to, my first daughter went to ABC preschool in town. It's a great preschool. We don't want to take away from those local preschools, but we want to offer a seat to anyone who wants one.
Right.
So we want to continue to grow and continue to meet that need, which I think I continue to talk about. If anything more procedures, because I want them to be able to sit down and.
Yeah, that's all I.
Okay. If anyone has any more procedures, I'll keep going and then you can ask me any more questions. Mr. Wyler, are you controlling?
I am, yeah.
Okay, I think, okay. I will, I'll, no, I'll go through this. So I just wanted to highlight, Mrs. Borelli, which is how we read some of this, just kind of our, I actually, they don't even know this because I haven't finished it. I asked for parent feedback from our teachers to celebrate our teachers and all the hard work they do. I think you've heard that, that passion that they have came through. But for a late teacher's appreciation, yet I asked families to give us some feedback about that. So I just have a sample because there was, we would be here all night. So Mrs. Copeland and Mrs. Harrelson, who's Mrs. Copeland's paraprofessional, along with our Oscar Junior teachers, which we just talked about, are phenomenal. She actually loves school and has grown so much this year. And she is, I took their names out, so it's a little worry, a little different worry. She's also very excited to go to school and see her teachers. She really appreciates how hard everyone works and the care they provide along with the life skills they teach. We truly love the Little Spartans and are happy to be part of the Spartan community. Thank you to Mrs. Borelli and Mrs. Rose, who is Mrs. Borelli's para. For all the support staff you do, you've made this year such an amazing year of growth for him. And this one makes me choke up because he was a move-in student and he came from a really hard situation. And this student has just flourished with us because he, his mom made some really great decisions for their family and he is just been able to flourish. And I don't want to cry in a boarding day. We can't thank the Little Spartan staff enough for the wonderful school year our son has experienced, the growth, the confidence, the kindness he has gained from his time in Mrs. Bodine's classroom. Brings us such much joy to our hearts and homes. Thank you so much for the love and dedication you all put into your craft. It just shows us, he is, and his loved ones, who can't get over how much he has changed in just one year. The next slide. All teachers in Mrs. Armstrong's morning class, which is on, she has two paraprofessionals in her morning class, Mrs. Boys and Mrs. F. Are all wonderful. Loving school is easy when you have great teachers. All this, all the teachers and staff at the Little Spartan program are amazing. Our team specifically has played such a huge role into where he would be today. I have no doubt that we as parents would be lost without each and every one of you. It has no, it's also no doubt our son's hair is a great deal for all of you as we do. Our son's growth has been exponential and it's a testament to amazing program. Our family is forever grateful and you are just the best. And that student was able to use a communication device this weekend, got a Mother's Day card and answered all the questions about his mom using a communication device. And it was amazing to see. I think Heather and I looked at each other and was like, you don't understand what this done for that mom? Because we're moms and I guess I'm really good at laundry times two kids that got my Mother's Day card home. But he was able to use an assisted communication device and communicate and share his story and tell us what he loves about his mom.
That he loves her more than chips and lattes.
Our feeling is so appreciative of the E C staff. We know our daughter loves school and everyone takes such great care of her, we couldn't have asked for a better start to her school career. So those are just some of the main awesome things that make this group an amazing group. And we'd always love to get a guy, but we're just a bunch of girls right now. But if you know anyone who wants to come work at E C. So then the next slide, our goals. What do we want to do? So developmentally appropriate practice for early childhood. I think the book's like 400 pages. We bought it. We're going to tackle a book study about that next year and we're going to break it apart and it's from birth to eight. And we're going to talk to our kindergarten friends and our first grade friends and talk about developmentally appropriate practice. And we are also going to do a book study and partner with Mr. Rice about doing book studies and each and every child in teaching preschool through an equality class. So that's our one big goal for our own growth as team. Two, increase social media presence and creating growth for the Little Spartan program. So our, I was on there last year and I just want to talk about all the great things we do. So we're going to partner with Ms. Holtz and a director of communication and really partner about getting our story up there. Continue to partner with Oscar Junior because we talked about how amazing it is. And Mrs. Walls and all the staff, Mrs. Eichelstein, I can list all of them. Mrs. Berg, Mrs. Per, Mrs. Kruer. I think I named one of them. Oh. So we're all going to partner with them and continue to offer that daycare portion along with the preschool portion that makes it accessible to our families and a great option for us. And my daughter keeps telling me that she's not going to be kid Oscar. She's staying in Oscar Junior. I don't know what happens when that happens next year. So increase advertisement for our community screener. So we didn't really advertise and we got a bunch of kids to come get screened for community service or community, that community screener. So we want to advertise it. We want to talk to pediatrician's offices. We want to talk to the local preschools and we want to just have that out there in our community. We want to put it in our exchange for our staff. We want to make sure that we, everybody knows that we're here as a resource. And we, I guess we want to just evaluate more kids if necessary, but we want to make sure that we are advertising and really supporting the families to get those resources. And then supporting transition to kindergarten from our five elementary buildings. I think that's the best thing about me being welcomed as a member of the elementary administration team. The five other principals have welcomed me very kindly, given me a lot of advice, but also we're really trying to support those kindergarten transitions and that we're actually doing the next three weeks. And then to finalize, being able to take four Cs, as we talked about, the community coordinated childcare and accept our first Little Spartan scholarship. So we had two anonymous donations made to the SES Foundation to start a Little Spartan Scholarship Foundation for our scholarship. Once four Cs is approved and that's finalized and we can say to them, they need that action, they can go the four Cs route, then we'll announce and start marketing the Little Spartans scholarship. And then I promise I'm done. Any questions?
What's your, what's your five-year dream?
My five-year dream? Well, how many do you want to go? So I guess my dream would be that every child in the Sycamore community is being served by some kind of preschool. So that doesn't mean us. That just means they have access to early childhood and learning. And of course I could dream big and give you.
Yeah, keep dreaming.
A early childhood center with, you know, a lot of different gross motor rooms and assisted technology for all who need that and a space to learn and grow and just be a welcoming first step to learning in our community. So yeah, of course I could, you know, build a building, do all that kind of fun things. I don't think that's in our dreams right now. But I think just making sure that we are targeting and no child is out there who needs services that we haven't been able to at least offer. You don't have to take us up on it. But offer our services and making sure that we're giving every kid the best step into kindergarten.
Sorry.
You're fine. I like questions.
I'm really intrigued though by this Oscar Junior piece too. The scholarship section, I guess, if a, if a parent can't afford for financial means, access to Oscar Junior plus Little Spartans, right now there is no option for them.
So Cor, or Oscar Junior is currently, if they're able to work through the four Cs process. And that would be that they need the criteria to be able to receive four Cs from the state assistance childcare. So if they can't afford it, that's one option to go. And then for the Little Spartans, that's kind of what we wanted to build the Little Spartan Scholarship. So I went, I talked, I found some people to give us some money and we're going that way to make sure that that financial option, we have an option. I will tell you, the business office has been great to work with. We have made payment plans as little as possible to make this work for a lot of our families who this year have had some obstacles.
Is there, how much does this cost, the Little Spartans piece annually for a child?
So it's $1.95 a month from September through May. We're adding, that was discussed last time. So it's going up $10 and we're adding May tuition.
And does Oscar Junior go year round?
Nope. Oscar Junior only is open on the days that Little Spartans is open because Oscar Junior wouldn't be available if the preschool program.
So no Friday?
Nope. Good thing for grandmas. So the daycare next year on Friday. So I mean, I think just from my perspective of having to pay for childcare before this, this is a great combo and an affordable combo for families.
Have you turned away anybody for financial reasons?
Nope.
You haven't, okay.
We'll figure it out. And that's kind of where that, like talking to families and making sure that they understand that we want to work with them and be as creative as possible. And that's where the collaboration with Nicole, the Assistant Superintendent of Business and her office staff have been really crucial into making sure that happens for our families.
Awesome.
I don't mind sitting down.
No, I'll keep you up there a little bit.
Oh, you're, I'm sorry.
So no, I appreciate, I appreciate you sharing these goals. I also appreciate the fact that two of the fours, or two of the six are specifically in regards to increasing awareness, whether it be through social media or advertising or however. Because, and it's just my opinion, but, and you've kind of alluded to it and directly have said it, but I don't think, I think in the bubble of this room it's very easy to, easy to know about this program. But I think if you're a young, first-time parent of a child and there are two now getting to three, what am I going to do? And you're exploring options, you're getting on Google. If you don't know families in the community, don't have a ton of friends, I just don't think that you know what this resource is here. The district is K through 12. That's what, that's what the district is to a lot of people. They don't understand that. So I appreciate getting that awareness out and, and trying to spread that in the community for, specifically for those parents that are looking at their three-year-old and saying, hey, this speech is not what maybe the nephew or the niece is. What's going on here? What do I do? I think you really don't realize how clueless parents can be. I mean, naive is probably maybe a better word. Like you just don't understand or you don't know where to go. So I appreciate you guys trying to spread that awareness because it is a great program. You guys do, you guys do a wonderful job. So I really, really appreciate that. And appreciate your presentation tonight to kind of go through that.
And I think the other administrators for high school and middle school that are in the room can say that my big passion this year has been early childhood through 12th grade or even early childhood through life school. We're serving that three to 22 age group and all the learners that come in there. And just to speak to your point, I knew of ABC preschool because my neighbor went to ABC preschool. I learned of Little Spartans program and I knew it was around. But when Mrs. Borelli and they offered blended learning, so I was a kindergartner in blended learning in COVID last year. What was I going to do with that three-year-old? And she joined Mrs. Borelli remotely with her papa, my father-in-law, every day. And the things that I, I got introduced to this team remotely the days that I had to cover remote learning at my house. And they can teach remotely. I can joke around with like, they can teach remotely. They can teach in a classroom. They can teach on a playground and they can teach on a bus. You can, they'll teach you anywhere. So I think that's just a testament to them. And now, oh, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Man, that's a hard act to follow. Last thing I want to do is talk now. And really, I've got one point and it's about calendar. So how exciting is this? Fortunately for everybody, this is a, this is a very short item. Proposing amending a calendar for board meeting dates next year. We looked at in November, correct me if I'm wrong. But the way that the dates fill in November, there are five Tuesdays in November. We recommended to, instead of meeting on the second, the fourth Tuesday, to meet on the third and the fifth. Kind of gets around Thanksgiving and the other, she was at November 8th, is election day, which is a day off. So we avoid that, which was the second Tuesday. So proposing to the board that, that we just amend the board meeting dates and times, or dates really for the 22, 23 school year, really just because of that change in November.
Is there a motion to approve the amended calendar as proposed?
So, second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Charlotte?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
Vito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Down there?
Yes.
Motion three.
Okay. Open discussion and future agenda items.
I have just a couple of things. First, I would like to invite you to take this box back.
Sure.
And it's only because after that presentation would break my heart taking a penny away from the program. I beg you to take them and put them to the students. Because I will put those tapes all over my house and my wife.
I was going to train you for your playdough.
There may be some negotiation.
Yeah, there is one great therapeutic tool in there.
It's the smell of it.
I did want to comment on Mr. Volta's request regarding the stoplight. I know we've talked as a, as a group about that intersection. And I know there's been talks in the community about the freedom intersection as well.
I have lived in that Sycamore Creek community since we moved to Sycamore in two thousand and six. And I've seen how that intersection has gotten worse every single year as more and more homes get built, more and more kids are going to the school there. So I can relate very, very personally to how difficult and how challenging that is. Like remember even just a year or two ago, and I'm sure I'm being recorded here. So in the county's oversight, they decided to do construction on that intersection at like seven thirty in the morning to repave it, not realizing, I guess, that all the kids have to be dropped out for school at eight o'clock. There is no other reasonable way to that school if anything happens at that intersection, whether it's an accident, which I think has also happened in the past, construction, et cetera. It is a minimum nine mile detour to take any back road into that intersection, which is unique amongst all of our schools, I think. So that's one challenge. I can also relate to, it is just a dangerous intersection for children, children and families at all times of the year. As cars are making that right hand turn into the school, you basically can't see traffic that's going straight to the right. If it's summertime, there's corn ten feet tall, so you can't see cars flying. Even though they're not supposed to be doing fifty-five miles an hour, I can tell you they're doing sixty. I've seen people pass over the double yellow line right there in front of the school. And thankfully, we do have police out there occasionally that are keeping an eye on that corner. But so I would just, I would support the board. And I know financially, I'm not asking for the school district to do anything, because I know that we have plenty of other priorities. But I would support the board taking the position of passing some sort of, what was the word he used? Or a resolution saying that we would support the county moving forward with some improvements at that intersection. I'd be fine, even if it were just a permanent speed limit reduction through, through town, but something that says we need a better situation for our families, our bus drivers and anyone else who has access to that, that school.
Isn't that a city intersection? Because of the two subdivisions being.
That's going to be city intersection there, yeah.
Okay, see, I was under the impression of the last ten years.
And my understanding is that the city is moving forward in that there's money that's going to be coming from the developers of the subdivisions.
Yeah, supposed to be.
That's going to help pay for that light. So I know, I know the city's working on it.
There is no developer on our subdivision.
We've had the same, well, they're building houses.
Yeah, right. But they solve a lot.
They solve lots. And that's the same thing on Frieden and Brickville, because they were there before that one, before that school was even built. And unfortunately, it's the number of warrants, which means how many people die until they put it in. We don't have the control over that unless someone wants to pay for it. So much like what happened down at the end of the negotiation at the middle school, where that, where Mount Hundred comes in. So that became a developer city cost. So this one will probably still beat Fried and Brickville as far as getting the light at some point, because they at least are talking about it.
No, but I, but I think we.
I don't have a problem with the resolution.
I don't think anybody on the board would not support it. Maybe you can talk to the mayor or the city manager and see what would be best for us to do to demonstrate that report or that support for them.
Most effective.
So that we can do it. I mean, I don't want to pass a resolution and make it look like we're not cooperating with them. We want to work together so that we can get this done. Because IDOT is a strange, strange organization to deal with, as we know from.
And they have, they have plans on how they're going to adjust that road. There's been, talked about it for a long time, but you're at least, I would say, ten to fifteen years from seeing that happen. At the short end of it.
To support what Eric's saying, I too think that there's a rather urgent nature to it. And I just hate the idea of thinking about, well, somebody has to die or there has to be some sort of, there's a present safety risk we're all aware of. I wish there's something that we could do. I understand the limitations the district has. I did a little independent research just with a safe passages group out of Virginia who helps communities with this and just kind of the feedback that I got, not specifically with the light, but with walkways and things. And it seems like general consensus across the board has been that you have to form a community coalition. You have to raise awareness. Community members have to vocalize this to city council members. And like that intersection's in the first and second alderman's domicile. And so really getting them to get behind this too is going to be what will hopefully expedite it. But yeah, I definitely, I don't know though. I'm just a volunteer board member. I'm not a city planner, so, but I want something.
Yeah, but we, I mean, I think it's best if we try to coordinate with the, with the city and hopefully the park district too can come on board and.
And persistence does prevail, because I just live a mile and a half up the road. And after many meetings and many community meetings and many meetings with Nathan, we got the one little straight stretch of planked road that is in there, double striped, and a recommended lower speed limit, which affects some people. So instead of driving seventy, they'll drive fifty-five. And that helps because, I can't tell you coming out of my, there's one weighing it out of my subdivision area. And I can't tell you how many times I've seen people almost just crushed. And we had a high school student that was, that died in an accident literally just half mile down the road. So.
That's why I just would like to know how much money, you know, what is it?
About a million, two, for a stoplight.
A million?
Two or three.
But I don't think it's the money. You've got to have permission to do it.
You do have to have permission to do it.
See, IDOT has to approve it.
Approve it, yeah.
And see, maybe there's a, again, and I'm not a city planner, but can they put police there? Can we do speed bumps? Is there a speed limit reduction? I mean, maybe there's some.
I mean, I think we can talk to the city.
You have the speed limit reduction during school hours right now, which is the one thing that the city was able to do without, within the parameters of what IDOT will let them do. Yeah. Which is the forty, so during school hours, so.
No, I would, I would love to have a light stoplight. That would be a wonderful thing.
If we were to pass one, it would be great to pass one of the other two as well.
I agree. Quite frankly. I think Fried and Brickville on Friday night with a bad accident.
Brickville and Fried is not just as bad as that was.
One of our students, so.
Got North School coming for both of those trips. I need a rug, so.
But I also like the idea of an early childhood center down the road.
It's a good dream.
I'll donate the visit.
See baby steps.
He's got his blueprints in those boxes too.
I got to post it.
We'll take those out. I'll give you back your rocks. Anything else for open discussion and future agenda? Not, then I'll accept a motion to go into executive session for the consideration of matters related to the appointment, employment, or dismissal of personnel, purchase, or lease of real estate, negotiations, and imminent litigation.
Second.
Would you second it? Roll call.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Chilo?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you for hosting. All right, it's nine twenty-nine and we're back in regular session. And is there a motion to approve the personnel report as presented?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call.
Jones?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Chilo?
Yes.
Davy?
Yes.
DeVito?
Yes.
Dombek?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.